The scores tended to not be quite as high. In some cases also, students took the test who did not take the AP class. They wanted to take the test and see how they could do. In those cases, there was a tendency for the score to be lower as well. So the board chairs put together, I'm sorry, the department chairs put together a comparison between the various subject areas and the national average. As you can see here, the AP Biology went down from 3.48. The average went down to 2.87. The national average is 2.85. So you can go down and see the comparisons across the board there. So in comparison to the national averages, Amsa in general tends to be higher. But compared to our previous scores, the scores, not universally, but in general have started to dip. I would attribute it based on the information that I got back from the chairs to the fact that we now open the test to a wider range of students. And in some cases, the students take the test without having taken the class that needs up to them.
Dr. Coe, do you know what percentage that would be in terms of how many students were taking the exam before and actually taking the college? It looks like almost every score was down except for maybe two. And it seems more than a dip. It seems kind of substantial. I'm just wondering what percentage that would be of students?
That's a small number. I don't have a percentage because I have reports from each of the department chairs and they talk about their particular department. But I think the main cause for the changes is the fact that the wider number of students are taking. When we started out taking, giving the AP test, I believe it was always students who had a certain level of academic achievement who were given the opportunity to take them.
But that change, I mean, our push to have more students taking AP tests dates back several years, right? So that should manifest itself in our 2015 numbers, I would've thought, or 2014 numbers when we made that push and that metric.
You can, maybe if we pull up the other one?
Well, you pull that up. Just one comment in terms of number that went down, number that went up. Actually, 10 went down, five went up, one stayed neutral, and one was new. The one that was new had a very high score. So it was about two, I guess, 10 down, six neutral, higher. And then, just as in every case, we were above the national average with the exception of one case.
So I think there's still discussion among the department chairs as to whether the best route to take is...
What is the negative effect of this number being lower? How does that hurt school? We're looking at this number saying it's lower, that's a bad thing. Is it?
Well, I mean, it depends on how you look at it. One department chair said in his opinion, it's very important for any student who has the potential to work hard and possibly improve to take the test. So in his view, if a student gets a two and has the experience of taking the AP and previously hadn't taken any and...
And that's more or less our reason for encouraging more students to take it, correct?
It has to do with being exempt from taking certain courses in college.
Well, yeah, it has repercussions in college.
For the individual takes the test, but us having an aggregate, our average number being lower than it was last year, is that a bad thing?
What happens to the college?
It's an indicator. It's an indicator is what we're looking at. So I mean, there's two pieces to it, right? So if nothing else changed and our test scores went down, that's a cause for concern. You're asking another question to put that off the left hand side. On the right hand side, what is the impact of having lower AP scores in terms of how the school will be ranked as, you know, one of the top schools in Massachusetts and things like that? You know, there is an impact associated with that. We can decide that we don't care about that and we care about giving more people an opportunity to take it.
Well, the situation, right, I think the concern is going to be there's a trend to that.
Right.
And it also, in some cases, entities that rank schools look at how many AP tests they take, you know? How many are taken? That's one of the factors that some of them use. Because it's considered to be an access question, you know? How many people are getting access to this advanced, you know, test and course? So really, I think it's a question of what the school wants, how we want to value, you know? What's the...
We do very well by access, or the number of students taking APs.
But I think Tom's point was that if we looked at this number of students that will factor into taking the exam that haven't actually taken the course, that would've manifested itself back whenever we put that in place in 212 or 213.
Well, there was two drivers that I heard. Driver number one that I heard was that we had broadened the number of people that are taking classes. We have a higher participation rate. My counter to that was I think we pushed more people to be taking AP classes prior to 2016 and we're seeing a drop off from, you know, 2015 to 2016. So frankly, I wasn't buying that argument very much. I would like to make sure that we've isolated out the impact of people taking an AP test where they didn't take the AP class. We can't stop people from doing that, but we can't control what their score is at that point either.
Yes. So actually, I think the data needs to be really looked at carefully because when, I just did a quick look, and actually from 2012 to 2015, that part, I didn't look that carefully, but it kind of was neutral, some went up, some went down. 2013 to 2014, we actually had, I think, one, two, three, four, from what I see up there, five down and three up. Okay? 2014 to '15, we had actually seven down, one up. So actually, this year, though, we had whatever, 10 down, we had five. Actually, this year, this past year was, on average, a little better in terms of, from a ranking perspective. My point is ultimately, I think you have to look at the numbers very carefully. There's historical information here that's buried in it and it's not so easy just to look at this year in isolation.
It is, and so, yeah, we're generalizing here, but I think what you're also seeing from 2015 to 2016, in addition to the number of scores that dropped, is the magnitude of the drop in the scores is substantial in many of the cases where we've had a drop here. And I think it warrants, you know, analysis is what I think it warrants at this point in time. It sounds like we've started an analysis of that and we'd probably be looking at it.
I agree.
I mean, so if you wanted to, just taking AP Biology as, you know, as for instance, 2013 to 2014, we dropped .02. 2014 to 2015, we dropped .05. 2015 to 2016, we dropped .61. And I think that's more upon, you know, a number of these, again, it's more quick and dirty, you know, quick and dirty look at the numbers. So it warrants understanding that. If, in fact, we had for 2015, you know, 50% of the kids were eligible to take AP Bio, took AP Bio, in 2016, 95% of them took it? I, you know, I'm hearing what you're saying, I'm buying what you're saying. If we had 50% of the kids take it in 2015 and we had 51% take it in 2016, I'm not buying, you know, I'm not buying that argument. So if it requires, you know, a little bit more analysis to tease out what's going on here and if we need to be doing something about that.
Well, I'd be interested in if we're going to do further analysis. So 2012, in session of calculus AP, everything went up. So I wonder if, as part of that, what was different in 2012 with 2016?
I'm pretty sure in 2012, there were only about certain people.
Well, is that true only for 2012? Or is that, again, I'd just be interested to know, like, what are the different pieces?
2012, 2013, around that. Because we don't have that many years. I just, I think it all, this is actually it. So the first two years were, the first couple, you know, you had no trends because there was no, there were two days. And so then they started looking at the trends. And I know 2012, 2013, it felt when there was a lot of, you know, plus unless you got AP plus, everyone's got recognition. And then I think this border, I think it was between 2013, 2014, really emphasized wanting to draw that up. So that would be a lot of time.
May I make a comment?
Yes.
In Mathematics, that one department, which is one I know because I'm in it, we always have had a large number of students take the AP test. The AB and BC combined has always been a significant percentage of our graduating class. So there, there should be less effect in terms of a push for new students, yet we still see this drop off. So it's probably something more, it's probably not just a one-note mechanism, it's probably a range of factors, no re-factors.
And what year are they taking the AP test?
For Mathematics, he takes this, not all of them. They're mostly juniors, there'll be some sophomores, some seniors.
All of them are primarily juniors and seniors?
Mostly juniors and seniors.
I think we've got, you know, a good start and I think it warrants continuing, you know, continuing to tease it out here and, you know, continuing to have the department chairs and departments, you know, looking at it and seeing whether we need to be doing something different.
I think it would be helpful, because this item is of such interest, if we had some kind of a timing, whether it's Dr. McCleary, the next board meeting, two or three board meetings from now, at some point, we have an update that's on the agenda just to be able to get a better understanding based on two or three months of looking into this. Where are we now? What do we understand in the future that we didn't understand, we don't understand today?
Yeah, I guess I pick up on that. So I think I may have been the one that skirted out on this one a little bit. So I guess I would say thank you to the school for jumping on it and starting a preliminary analysis, but let's take the time we need to do a proper analysis and, you know, come back and we'll, I think we'll leave it in school and they're going to be ready to talk to us again about this.
I think the analysis, the gathering of the information comes from the different departments, but the analysis will probably have to be carried out by, you know, one person with the ability to get all of the data. We, some of the data, I think, is housed in different parts of the school. We have to really get it all together. I think the person who is most, to my knowledge, dealing with the actual collecting of the scores and organizing the AP test is a person who's currently on long-term leave, but we can definitely get more information than that.
Dr. McCleary, is there other parts of this data available to us? Like, if you wanted to say, okay, if you were to, I'm not trying to stand here, trying to understand, kind of, gravity, if this really is a leading indicator or something, a way to scrub out people who did not meet the old criteria, folks who've never taken the test before or maybe were never, like, I'd just, I'd be interested to know, kind of, the different cuts on that.
Almost like an overlay of the...
Well, it's just, it's what I would do, right? I'd want to find out and say, okay, so this is an aggregate number spaced out...
I think that's, the data's going to be available that way now because how would you do that? You'd have to have an individual teacher go look at, like, smooths from your...
Well, so I just didn't, I don't know. I don't know if when you're taking, is there something that's, is a way to say, so it's taken for the first time?
My sense is we're not going to give out that kind of data very conservatively.
I'm not sure why, okay, I can't speak for all departments, but if you're asking, if the question is, can we find out who took the test, who was taking it cold on their own without having gone through the course? Well, when we look at the list each year, we know that. When I have had students take such a test, I've had students in honors calculus take an AP test because they wished to. And that counted as an AP score even though they'd never taken an AP calculus. So departments certainly can track it class by class. So if the willingness to make the effort is there, I don't quite see why this data couldn't be compiled.
Yeah, the piece that's harder to get more meaningful is who, who that would've been screened out?
Yeah.
You know, how did that, who is that group, I define and collect it, and then who do you, versus those who would've made whatever the cut was?
And this is, this is why Mathematics is peculiar.
Yeah.
Because we've always had a large number taking the test all the way through. Percentages have been enormous. So for us, this screening effect would never be evident. So within our own department, we don't have to worry about that.
Right, okay.
But again, other departments, I know it's different.
Okay, so again, I want to come back to the national averages and I don't want us to become obsessed about this. We're doing great. If we actually are expanding the number of people that are getting access to AP tests and they're going to be able to college credit because they're scoring, you know, a three, four, or five on it, that's great. That's something that we should be proud of and that's a very good thing. We just want to make sure that this drop off isn't a leading indicator of something else is, I think, what we want to look at. But we still have an awful lot to be proud of from, you know, AP perspective there.
So is this a very important conversation? I just want to do a time check already without, there is...
Okay, I would like to say a few words about the update on the mentoring program. Came up last time. The department chairs and the principal have been working on putting together a program using some of what was done in the past, but also putting their own stamp on things. And there are really two parts to it. One is the department chairs have been meeting with the new teachers since the beginning of school and trying to help them to acclimate to the culture and the subject matter of their teaching and give them pointers on how to better manage their class, which tends to be one of the areas that most new teachers have a lot of questions about. The department chairs ask the new teachers under their department what they thought they most needed to become more effective in their first year of teaching at the school and then compile that information and work with the principal to put together a program and a plan. And then they reached out to exemplary teachers in their own departments to see if they would be interested in mentoring. So that list has been finalized and now the two parts of the program are coming together. As Tom mentioned, it was under construction. But the actual contact with the teachers has been taking place between the department chairs and the new teachers since the beginning of the year. But there hasn't been in place for every teacher, a fellow, a colleague, a fellow teacher to help them. And that's now in place, so we're moving forward with that now. I got the final document from the department chairs and the principal just yesterday.
Dr. McCleary?
Yeah.
So is it your perspective that what used to be considered the normal functioning of a department head, which included natural mentoring to everyone in their department, and of course, attuned to the special issues that would be there with a new teacher, that this is now to be considered actually as a formal part of a mentoring program?
Yes, I think that the department chairs play a very important role in bringing on board new teachers and helping them to acclimate not only with their teaching, but also to the cultures. But if...
Could you answer me? I had mentioned in my faculty report that teachers are concerned as to perhaps a blending of the roles of a department head as evaluator of their staff and being formally part of a mentoring program, which is meant to be supportive and helping you grow into something without being judged by it. Are there instruments in the program that's being implemented that would clearly divide those roles so there's no issue about, for example, breaking confidentiality of the issues that arise with a new teacher?
Yes.
Can you describe them for us?
Well, the department chair has a great interest in making sure that all the teachers in their department are performing at the best level possible. And so that's, that's something that they have a natural interest in doing. And so when they mentor the teachers, it's not to judge them to be lacking in many ways, it's to help them to come up to the measure of what constitutes a good teacher. And I don't think it's, I don't think it's helpful to set up any kind of opposition there. I think it's important to stress the fact that they're working together.
So the answer would be there will not be a divide, they will be blended?
Well, I'm not sure I understand the question. They were never divided. I don't think there would ever be a division.
Well, for example, let me make it concrete. When I came into Amsa, I had as my department head at that time, Scott Jurey, as Mathematics was under the science at that time. He was my department head. I could go to him to ask for help with, what do I do as a new teacher in my classroom? Where is this machinery? That sort of stuff. But I also had a mentor that was, who was completely independent of the department head, whose job was not to in any way be looking at me as how I was to be evaluated in terms of being resigned for the next year, but was purely an ally in learning how to become a teacher at Amsa. And I could speak to his comfort and confidentiality that nothing I discussed would be then brought up or relayed to someone in authority administration. And it's that division that I have in mind.
Oh, that's peer mentoring.
Well, a peer mentor is being assigned by department to the teacher, so...
And so that's what I'm asking. Can the faculty be, have assurance that the role of that mentor will in no way ever require them to give information to someone above them to be used potentially for purposes other than just helping the person become a better teacher?
Of course it's helping them become a better teacher, yes.
Thank you.
So I think, you know, the word, mentor can be used to name different things, which is unfortunate, using the same word, is that, you're talking about a kind of deep supportive supervision is one aspect of this, and that's what departments are doing. Is that the value of information too? Yes, it is. I think your question is, is the peer mentor in a confidential relationship with the new teacher?
My point is that in prior years, Amsa's mentoring program was peer mentoring. Department chairs were expected, were instructed as part of their job description to have a mentoring role as department heads. But the mentoring program, with that labeled as such, was distinct, separate from the department heads. So now we're seeing a new model where there's a kind of, you know, okay, let's bring in department heads formally into what we're calling the mentoring program. And that will be perfectly reasonable. But what some faculty, many faculty are wondering is, will there be some sort of compromise in the integrity and isolation of the classical older mentoring program that we had? In other words, now that we have peer mentoring blended in with this other mentoring to a whole, might there be a kind of pressure or a kind of expectation that information from the classical mentoring model to now flow into the department, the department head's aspect of it? So we just want some sort of assurance that genuine confidentiality in this aspect will be maintained.
So actually, sort of, kind of, to take that saying, can I, actually, I have a question...
I guess I don't see the conflict.
No, well, the question is, if you'd like, the question is, is the relationship between the peer mentor and the new teacher confidential?
Well, my question would be, does the peer mentor have to report to the department heads on progress? Right now, yes?
They work together. This is not, see, I think the fundamental disconnect I have here is there's an underlying assumption that somehow the department chairs do not have the best interest of the teacher in mind. And in my mind, that's just a flawed model. Of course they do. They want the teachers to succeed. To think otherwise is to introduce a sort of a fundamental divide into the school, which is something we do not want to prove. There has to be a unified effort to do the best possible job. And to think that you can silo these things perfectly from one another is, in my view, damage the fundamental integrity of the school. I mean, you, the department chairs have as their goal, the reason they're the department chairs is because they are presumably exemplary teachers and have an exemplary command of the academic content knowledge in their subject area. That's what a department chair is supposed to have. They're supposed to be able to manage a classroom, to teach effectively, to have a strong academic background, to be a kind of a model for the other teachers. So to the extent that they have that, naturally, you want them to be in the forefront, helping to bring on boards and...
I'm not asking any questions about the supervising, supervising, supervising role.
And mentoring role. It's not solely a supervising role.
Right, I'm not talking about that person, you know. What I'm talking about is the peer mentor.
Right.
Where you said to me it was confidential and Scott asked it a different way and puzzled me. So if I'm about it and my boss or our board says there's some things that Chris needs to work on, and Chris, we're going to hire you an executive coach. I have a confidential relationship with an executive coach. I'm responsible to you for improving my performance and if I don't, you're going to do something like that. But whatever I discuss with the coach, it's between me and him. Is it like that or is it something different?
Yeah, I think to a certain extent it's like that, yeah. And I don't think, again, I don't think there's a perfect divide between what the department chairs are trying to achieve and what the mentor that the student, the teacher is assigned is trying to achieve. They have to work together.
Nor is there, my coach is there at LCC. That's the only thing he cares about.
I think what I gather, and I guess you said, but I don't know how strongly, is the question of confidentiality and if between the teacher and the peer teacher, that that discussion is confidential and does not get shared with the department chair, then I think, Tom, there's a comfort level. If there is, but when you say to a certain extent...
Well, I think they're naturally going to work together. I think to isolate them completely is to get rid of the whole purpose of having the department chairs involved. I think there has to be some kind of crossover and going out.
I don't think that's a part of this question. I just think it's the, if it's confidential between the peer, the peer, between the peer mentor and the teacher, then I think you have a model that potentially is workable.
Yeah, well, I would say this, that in any kind of conversation that a teacher has with someone, if they want it to be confidential, that should be respected. You know, it would just be like if you went to anybody in the school and you wanted to confide in them about something, then that should be framed.
Yeah, but I wouldn't want to start every conversation I have with my peer mentor as, this is confidential.
No, but again, I think, I think you're missing the point. I want to make sure that there's, that people are working together for the same objectives and they don't see themselves as working at odds with each other.
I think we get that.
But if a teacher, if a teacher is having a problem and provides to their peer mentor that they're having a problem, and we just established that the department head is supposed to be the person that's the best teacher out there, the best resource out there, them not having that information and being able to, you know, provide some strategies on how to address the problem, we're cutting the program off at the needs of that.
Well, that's my, that's my point.
I think it is, yeah. I totally think it is.
I don't think there can be at the outset a presumption that somehow the department chair is not having the best interest of the teacher in mind.
May I answer?
If that's the presumption, then that is a problem.
It is not the presumption of the faculty that there's any such thing. It's a mischaracterization to say that. For example, my department head, Luber Schmidt, is someone I have long admired, I have complete trust in. She's a remarkable person. Her integrity is impeachable. I would trust her with anything. Nevertheless, if there was a new teacher coming into our department, I would fully expect them to be nervous, afraid to discuss everything that can happen in the class with the department head. There is a natural, effective role for Luber Schmidt as mentor, as guide to the whole department. She's one of among a number of remarkable teachers in that department and she's a great department head. She's a great asset in that regard. But teacher A comes in and teacher A is not knowing her and is trying to get ordinary help in how to arrange, adjust Amsa at the small scale. This, he will be evaluated, or she will be evaluated, by Luber Schmidt when it comes to observation of classes and the general run of how are you improving as a teacher? Because we know in the first year, there'll be a lot of work to do with all teachers. It would be important to that new teacher to have the comfort of knowing that they could share mistakes, share... It would be important to that new teacher to have the comfort of knowing that they could share mistakes, share first stumbles with a colleague, and that in no way would this not become something that becomes reported to Luber Schmidt, which I know she's completely trustworthy, but he or she new teacher does not know. If you're going to have teachers be effectively bringing out their best as they try to improve at AMSA, I don't see where it is productive to put all in the palm of, well, perhaps, you know, this person here who you don't know, don't yet know how to trust, this is your department head, and you could have total complete confidence in everything that they would do in reaction to the mistakes they make if you're growing into AMSA. I don't see where we're actually solving the problem by melding these together. I can only see the creation of new problems.
Well, I respectfully disagree. I think that the principal and the department chairs do want to have some influence on the mentoring, and I think it's legitimate for them to have that. And I don't think in any way, from what I've gathered from other the department chairs or the principal, that there's any concern that they will not be acting in the best interest of the new teachers. I mean, the new teachers would have just as much, if not more, reason to trust the judgment of the department chairs as they would of one of their colleagues. After all, the colleagues that they're going to be managed by are chosen with the agreement of the department chairs because they're the ones that know the departments the best. So the department chair is going to say, well, these are my top teachers, and these are the ones I would really like to mentor in the new teachers. That just breaks common sense to me.
Hey, I don't think any teacher would have an issue with department heads playing a role in mentoring and in choosing who mentors would be. However, in the interaction between new teachers and the mentors that they have, any possibility of information in this mutual conversation becoming part of what department head would be looking at, I think would be counterproductive.
Well, I disagree, Tom.
So, yeah, I, well, actually, I have one suggestion. I can do that really quick. So, in my experience, the, the need to be a relationship between the, in this case, the department chair and the person who's assigned this to the mentor. But there, it's a very specific, the rules of which they engage are very specific. So it's something like, I'd ask you to mentor F, and here are some things that I'd really like you to focus on, right? So you go off, you have your very private conversations, and then there might be an exchange where you come back and you say, hey, like, have you seen anything different in F's performance? And I say, well, he's still acting this, but I've actually started to see that stuff, and I'd really like you to continue to double down on that, so I can say. And you go off and do that. So the exchange is much more about, are my objectives that I set out as the leader being achieved and am I seeing a difference? That's very different from what I think is being implied here, that there's a gray area where we're having an actual exchange back and forth, where you start to share, well, you know what, I think, I understand what's at the core of them. I think he's struggling with X, Y, and Z, and that stuff isn't, in my world, that stuff would never be shared. It's much more about, I'm setting out the objectives, you're out to do that, and we're having conversations whether or not those objectives are being achieved, and it stops there. And I think, so I think that, so I don't know if that is any better, Tom, but I, for me, that's, I think that's the clarity. And what, and I think what may be confusing for folks is, you keep talking, you're talking passionately about the, the kind of shared objective, but it implies that, that the exchange between the mentor and the chair might, might be an opening, more open exchange. And that's very different from saying, you know, I want you to work on this. I'm still not seeing improvement. Can you keep that, I think?
Sure. Yeah, I think, I think that will be what we define.
So I think those kinds of, if you digest that, if you go, I think, if I write, I think that type of specificity, saying this is what, the exchange is what we look for, and would not be acceptable. We're not looking for you to, you know, I think that's the problem.
It's just that we agree on the goals.
Yeah, it's really, it's, you know, I definitely question, are, am I seeing a difference in behavior, and let's keep working on those things. Is it, I don't know if that's, that's my experience, I don't know.
We are looking forward to seeing how it plays out in practice, and we certainly hope that's what happens.
Last thing is an update on communication. So we're in the process of finalizing the hiring of a communications manager. We've been interviewing a number of people, and I introduced the candidate to a number of people in the office we're already working, and we're pretty close to having that completed. We're also looking at the formation of a ED advisory group, which will have a number of representatives from different parts of the community, parents, teacher, administration, and students. And that, the function of that group will be to meet on a monthly basis with the director and talk about ideas and get insights on various problems or challenges that the school is facing. So that's in words, we had the first ED coffee, parent coffee of the year in early October. The topic was the role of the humanities in a math and science academy. It was well attended. There were about thirty parents there. There was a lively exchange of ideas, and a lot of parents gave background from their own education to how the humanities helped them, both in their ability to communicate verbally and inviting, give them perspective. A lot of them were in technical fields. So at the end of that discussion, I think it was an opportunity for parents to meet other parents as well, because there were a number of new parents there who had sixth graders. And then we came to a conclusion, we spent the last part, a little bit of the last part of it, to think about what they wanted to have as a topic for the next month. And we came up with the topic of the issue of cheating and what role the school could play in trying to talk about that, and generally academic honesty. It really tied in with the whole discussion of how we can help people develop character. And so we settled on that to be the topic for the next coffee, which is coming up in early November. I think it sort of set a nice precedent that at the end of each coffee, we sort of talk about where that might be for the next, for the next month. And then what I'm hoping to do is, going forward, have the results of these coffees sort of promulgated out quickly once we get the communications manager in place, to have somebody there who maybe is taking notes, maybe putting a quick article up with some pictures, etc., to get the wider community aware of what we've been discussing and generate interest in the ensuing of meetings. One piece of feedback I've gotten, this came last year as well, was that some people would like to have an opportunity to attend these in the evening. We did have one or two evening sessions last year. They weren't as well attended as the morning sessions, but we, we've taken account of that feedback, so we're going to plan some for the evenings as well.
We'll move on to the chair business.
So if I can just say, we're worrying about forty minutes tonight, so if folks can, in their items, if they can't have a little shorter.
So Pity's task force appointment, as Tom Asoreto is now officially a board member, I'm going to take the opportunity to link him officially to Pity and to go back to Pity. We also, with the task force, I wanted to ask whether Allison and Mike were comfortable dissolving the collective bargaining task force, since I have the final contract on my desk assigned. So that's, we will reconstrue to for the next one, that there's no need for it, right?
Right.
Okay. So that task force is done, it's resolved. And the facility task force was, is a board task force, and it was previously chaired by Craig. So my recommendation is for the time being for it to remain a board task force, and I'll step that onto the facility task force and chair that. Right now, we have Tom and Allison and Scott on that task force as well. Anyone else that is interested? For the time being, it's largely mitigation related, and Craig has indicated that he is willing to stay. I don't have that point. All right. That's what I have for Pity's task force. Complaints, please. And we have two outstanding complaints. As, as, we talked about, you and I are on the civil rights one.
So we have one, which is a civil liberties complaint, which I gave an update at the last meeting. It's still in process. We met with the family, some members of the administration, and we still have some additional members of faculty to meet with. And so that's ongoing at this time, and we'll update as we have more information at the next meeting.
And then the second one is a complaint that it's time to live and work.
Yes, that's still in process. We have to follow up with a couple of more interviews. And we'll, we'll have, I'm hoping we may have it closed by the next, or should have it closed by the next meeting.
I'm going to ask for a couple of other task forces to just give brief updates. Special education, health.
Okay, so we covered a few things. We, with Pauline's help, got a clarification with what the scope of the task force was, which is the special education task force of the board is to understand the governance aspects of how special education is delivered at AMSA and how the PAC interacts with the school and the board. So that was important because we were trying to accomplish the idea that the board task force is really separate and apart from the PAC and should be focused on governance. The other thing that we were discussing through Jessica Hennessy's help was the idea of getting a budget to provide for ZEMR's, different folks that were going to come in over the course of the year in five different areas that were outlined, and that would be very helpful in educating the public about special education. And so my understanding was about maybe nine, ten days ago, Jess was going to meet with somebody in the administration to discuss the budget for that and what that would look like moving forward for the meeting this year. And then the other part was that, my understanding, there might have been a fall through with not having the PSATs, the accommodations that need to be provided for kids with disabilities in terms of them taking the PSATs, and somehow that might have been missed. And I'm not sure if there's an update on what the response was to that, but that's where we are right now. So it's still in process with what we're doing and trying to coordinate with the administration of certain things and, you know, figure out what we're going to do moving forward.
Regional issues, Ken?
Regional issues task force started meeting late in the spring, met several times, trying to get things off the ground. And then we got to the point, I think, where we were looking for some support and input from the faculty and staff. So I reached to Dr. McCleary. And so he and I are scheduled to meet next Thursday to, I guess, take next steps to discuss that. So that's, that's what we're headed.
Greg, can I put Simon under you as a chance to talk about the board roundtable?
Yeah, sure. So I think we've touched on the parent relative. I don't know if you want to add anything else to those who attended. Those, Chris, who are all those? I'm sorry? And so then Pauline and I attended the faculty employee roundtables two days ago. I think, you know, several of the items that Tom touched upon were brought up, namely, the mentoring program, challenges with schedule, a series of other issues. I think when, when we bottled them all up, I think it boils down to, therefore, more communication as well as, not just communication kind of one way, but collaborative type communication. So some avenues for the employees to share ideas, thoughts around change that might be introduced, to give feedback on, for example, whether it's a schedule, whether it's mentoring program, etc., to do things around that. And Pauline, very importantly, shared that as part of the goals going forward, we would try to, we would be actually introducing aspects of how to get to more, to get to more communication and collaboration within the overall faculty meeting. I don't know, Tom, you were present there, and Pauline, I, I'm bubbling it up quite a bit, but, but I don't know if you have anything else to add. The only other thing I'd say is I truly appreciate all the input and sharing that the employees did. A lot of them joined, I think it was over forty.
Forty-six.
Forty-six. And it was very valuable. I would strongly recommend, I know it's a challenging time to attend, but I would strongly recommend other board members, who would have to be more this year, to try to attend at least one during the rest of the year. It's incredibly valuable to hear employees' opinion.
I just had one quick thing. When you mentioned collaboration, it just triggered for me, from the parent roundtable yesterday. And one of the themes that I just picked up, Dr. McCleary, is this desire for parents to have more input or two-way dialogue with regards to the coffees. And that great vehicle, or certainly a desire of wanting to try to have more of a dialogue with coffees, whether it's influencing some of the topics of discussion, or having some time left open where different topics could be discussed, or just some mechanism where they can have more engagement in the coffees.
Yeah, well, most of it is about that one. Actually, the last one we had, I start out by giving five minutes of sort of the theme, and then we start talking. We try to keep it on the theme for one coffee, so that we can get somewhere on what is drifting off all sorts of different things.
I think that's the issue, is that the parents don't, because it has to stay on the theme and they have other questions, there's no vehicle for them to get their questions answered by the administration. And I've heard that on many, many.
I think that strikes me like, that might be a place where the advisory group that we're looking at could function, because that would be an opportunity for people to, you know, talk about. I do think that it's helpful to have a meeting where you have a focus and you can go into it in some detail. Because it, the coffee, for example, shouldn't turn into a meeting like a parent-teacher meeting where people are bringing up, you know, specific concerns about their child. So whenever that comes up, you gotta go back to it.
I don't think that's what they're looking for. I think they're looking for an opportunity to discuss school-related topics. But there's no, there's no time to do that. So I think that's really what they're looking for.
Your question is like, would it be solved by having one, one that's open?
Actually, though, I do agree with Dr. McCleary that this advisory group might be a way of getting those topics to McCleary.
Yeah, so if the advisory group doesn't do it, maybe the approach is to do it every other on the coffees, where one is themed and the other is pottery.
And it might be interesting just to sort of get some feedback, because there was some sentiment that I picked up that some of the parents didn't feel that there was a lot of dialogue. And so if your perception is that there is, there's a disconnect, at least with some parents, so.
I don't know, I don't know what to tell you. The people that were there are all, it was a lot of talking and it wasn't, it wasn't only me.
I guess people said that they didn't feel listened to.
Yeah.
That's feedback. I mean, I, I can't tell you more on what that means. That's what they said.
I did spend a lot of time listening.
Anything else on this? You're gonna try to schedule?
Yeah, we will continue through here, and if folks can, what we'll try to do also is just from a scheduling perspective, put out the schedule way up front, so it can kind of move further. Thank you.
So this is a new and different topic for us. I thought that we would have. I thought that we would have an opportunity to talk about, about question two. That, you know, I circulated a guide for what, you know, we can do as a charter board of trustees, what you can do as an individual trustee. I know that Dr. McCleary has had this circulated here, you know, discussed it with the school. But I did want to have a discussion at least about question two and not just presume that everyone is in favor, but just surface what your thoughts are, what you've been hearing, what you are thinking, whether you are in favor. This does not affect ANSA specifically. There is more lifting the charter cap for, in general, but if the impact is going to be in schools or special education. I'll leave that open to other thoughts.
So I'll start out, I guess, if anyone else is coming into it. So I personally am against question two. And, you know, a lot of people, there's a lot of misinformation out there relative to the funding, for example, being one of the things that, you know, money is being drained out without acknowledging that the money follows the students. There, I think, is also some misinformation out there about accountability of the board to, you know, to the state for the charter. You know, the school committee is so much more accountable than what the board of trustees is, and I also don't agree with that. So some of the things that are sort of more obvious statements out there are around the funding challenge and the accountability challenge. I think to me, oh, red hairs. The thing that I focus on is the ability of the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to oversee charters. And so if you're going to have this huge expansion, there seems to be very little talk about DEES's ability to take on responsibility to oversee that increased number. And frankly, I think DEES probably doesn't have the resources it needs to oversee the charter schools that it has. There isn't trustee training, where, you know, whereas on the school committee side, there is training for trustees. When you take a look at the frameworks and the use of the mass frameworks for helping to put structure around the curriculum for regular, traditional district public schools, we don't have those kind of things for charter schools. We, of course, have our charter, and it's faithful to the charter. And I think DEES probably struggles to try to hold accountability. You know, we heard Dr. McCleary say that DEES's response around the accountability plan is not to use the accountability plan to look more broadly across how are charter schools held accountable, but in fact wants to reduce the number of things that is being tracked in accountability plan. And so I don't fault DEES. I don't fault, you know, charter schools. I think charter schools are good and useful things. I fully support that. This isn't about whether charter schools should exist or not. It's about whether we ought to be expanding. And to me, when I look at expanding, my big question is around the, is DEES's readiness to take on responsibility to oversee it, so.
Well, I respectfully disagree. For me, it's all about choice. And if you can get more choice for a student to go to different places and they have those choices, I think that's a fantastic thing. So for me, I would like to see more charter schools, because it's more choices. You can decide whether to send your child there or not. You can stay in the district, but with more charter schools, you actually have a choice. So for me, it's about choice.
Well, so I appreciate that, but the reality is that you have choice. You can send your kid to a private school.
Well, not everyone can.
Well, wait a second. If you're sending your kid to a public school, there are public funds being spent in that. And so accountability and stewardship of those funds becomes a more important thing. And Massachusetts actually has a very strong oversight plan. You go to other states, Ohio being a good example, and Pennsylvania too, good example of states where charter school oversight is abysmal, okay? And so having more choice without having the accountability and stewardship, just, you know, I'm not sure if that's necessarily a good thing, but you're talking about task force.
That's your opinion.
Well, I think that's where we're at.
I think that obviously, well, maybe not so obviously, but I'm in favor of the question. It would raise the number of charter schools that could be implemented in any given year to twelve, which I think is a modest, a pretty modest increase. Currently, there are about seventy-some Commonwealth charter schools in the state. And we're not talking about raising the cap in other states. We're talking about Massachusetts. I think Ken rightly points out that Massachusetts has one of the most admired accountability systems in the country for charter schools. They're considered to be very thorough in our vetting of charter applications and then actually granting them. We have a five-year term, unlike any other district public school, which can perform poorly for decades and without being closed. And a charter school can be closed after five years. So there's a much tighter, much higher threshold for success in charter schools. The accountability plan is limited, it's true, Ken said it's limited. But part of the reason that charter schools were started by the Education Reform Act in the early nineties is so that there would be less bureaucratic red tape to hinder people from forming schools that they thought might give better options for parents. And also, part of the Education Reform Act says that the reason for this enabling of the charter schools was not only to provide choice, but to allow teachers and administrators to do new things, to do things better in different ways. I think ANSA is a good example of that. And also, it was to provide the opportunity for these new things to be spread, you know, not only to other charter schools, but to other district traditional schools. And we certainly make those attempts to do that. You know, last year, we invited every superintendent, every administrator, and any teachers who were interested from all our sending districts to come and spend a day here, meet with our, you know, look at our classes, meet with our department chairs, meet with the teachers. And we were taken up on it by one school leader. So we do it every year, but, you know, the attempt to disseminate, we're making the attempts to try to spread the good things that we're doing here. I think usually you see those repercussions in the way that schools tend to change in districts where charter schools are nearby. I mean, even in Marlborough, I've had people who have been in the system for a long time say that they're beefing up their STEM program. It's been a direct result of having a school here. So I think that's a good issue. So, you know, I don't really see a problem in the capacity. The charter school office, since I've been in charter schools, has grown in numbers, the number of employees and their abilities. Allison Bag, who's one of the key people down there, she's been there now for almost ten years. Cliff Chang's been there for roughly ten years. So I think they have the capacity. And frankly, if the number of charter schools increased, they would add more people to their staff to take care of it. So I guess I don't see that as being necessarily a big problem.
Do you want us to vote yes or no?
I would encourage everybody. You know, Suffolk University, Boston, the poll that came out today has it tied at forty-five, twenty-four percent. So, and there's nine percent of the voters undecided. So, you know, I'm going to spend some of my free time in the next few weeks trying to convince my neighbors to vote for it. I think it's good to, you know, and it's going to have repercussions, because I'm sure you're aware that Massachusetts is looked to by many other states in the country as a leader in education. And traditionally, Massachusetts as the birthplace of a public school is looked to as a leader. And so whatever we do, however we're successful, the other states try to emulate it. Frankly, the performance of the Boston area charter schools has been terrific, haven't we? And all the studies that Elsie has pointed out. Even when, you know, some of the studies have compared students who won the lottery and got into the charter school with students who had applied for the lottery and lost and gone to another school. So the same pool, the same motivated pool of people. And the students who did win the lottery and went to another school actually did more, did more poorly academically. So they were comparing, you know, the same group. But, you know, in my opinion, I think it can be nothing but good, it can do nothing but good, giving the parents more choices and also really bolstering the other public schools. I also should point out one thing that doesn't get mentioned very much. When a student leaves a public district school, goes to a charter school, that public district school receives a hundred percent of the tuition the next year, and it exceeds twenty-five percent over the next five years, for a total of two-hundred-and-twenty-five percent. When a student leaves a charter school, we get zero tuition the next year. Now, sometimes people criticize that and say, yes, but that's not funded at the legislative level over here, which is true sometimes. But it doesn't negate the fact that in many cases over the last few decades, these schools have consistently gotten paid for students that don't even go to school there anymore. In any business, you don't get paid anything when it comes to that, right?
So Pauline, just a touch, we're at ten minutes for that.
Do we have other comments on this? I think one possibility was that number of school committees in the state have actually passed regulations, just making a statement as a school committee that they're against question two. I think the number now is at two-hundred school committees. And so I'm thrown open to this board, whether you want to have a discussion about the position on this.
What I can hear, what you say, Pauline?
Indicating a position on, you know, that whether we have a position on question two.
As a school committee?
As a board, right.
How did you want to go? Well, what's going?
We could do as, well, I guess the question is, do we want to do a resolution? Or do we not want to?
I think we should do it.
Yeah, if you do a straw poll. We could do a straw poll, and if we're unanimous, then we could take a vote. Or we could take a vote as a split vote. And that this becomes a matter of all correct members.
Well, I mean, some of the school committees were school votes. Those weren't all unanimous.
The Marlborough School Committee, the mayor voted, they have a resolution against question two. The mayor voted against that resolution, so he's in favor of charter schools. But most of the committee voted for, you know, against the question two. Three hundred school committees in Massachusetts have voted against question two. Maynard, Marlborough, or two of them. I haven't checked the other districts, but I think the school committees or the school boards for the charter schools should speak up for their.
Absolutely, absolutely. I think we should go around and get this, what do we do, a straw poll? Straw poll at least, right? So you can't vote unfortunately. So it resolves from this discussion.
Pauline, I think I read in information you said that faculty members are restricted in what they can say and advocate for this? Am I allowed to participate?
They're the highest restriction.
Yeah, you actually have the highest restriction. You are not allowed to express a position on this during work time or as a representative of the school, which is a concept.
So I will sit quietly.
Would you agree with Tom?
If Tom wants to tell me his opinion, I can, I can.
Yeah, so let's do straw poll. Ken, we know your position. Or, okay, right, I'm in a straw poll. Okay, Liz, I'm in favor. Scott?
I'm in favor.
I'm in favor. In favor?
In favor.
In favor. Anybody else?
In that case, do we want to do a resolution?
Absolutely.
Like we do, so I would undertake a motion to make a statement that we are in favor of.
So we support question two.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion, okay?
Who made the motion?
Mike, Allison?
I said yes.
Yeah, we all said yes. Yes, so all in favor and opposed?
Well, I'm sorry, we'll see.
The motion is that we're making a resolution to indicate support for.
Question for yes.
For question, but yes. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, thank you. The motion does pass. Okay. Annual goals check-in. Tom, you're actually putting this up on the board. We do need to go, right, we want to go through our board's goals. And you're behind on some of these, because we obviously have a lot of recreational issues here, but I do want to at least take.
That one?
Yes, but the opportunity to see where we are and see if we need to, you know, assign some work here. So we didn't need the timing on some of these, but the first one was to identify the top priorities from the faculty and family surveys. We have done that now, just last month we did that, and track action items. So we haven't yet developed action plans, but we did task that to the administration to do that. So that'll be something to ensure is happening. The effectiveness of board communication to all stakeholders. We have not done this. We did make a proactive decision not to do this right now. We made the proactive decision not to do it in May, because we wanted to wait the survey results. And then when we got the survey results in the summer, felt that we wanted to wait until the communications person was in place to actually help the board do this as well. So is there any questions or concerns about that? Or do we want to actually take more action here? This is board communication.
Is there a way that we could just include items in the constituent surveys that address it?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's.
Let's catch up the next round of.
The schedule for the next round is the spring survey that we actually. They pulled this to the charter. So this is an area that I think we have, we haven't done, and I think it would be very valuable to continue this work, both to help the school and the faculty as well as the greater community. We began this idea of distilling the charter application down to, you know, a couple of pages of statement inviting principles. And then we didn't actually finish that. I think it would be really valuable to try to pick that back up and to continue. I don't exactly know where that stands. We have the document. I think that Chris and my representative, Chris and Ken, worked on that. And I don't exactly remember where.
Worked on it?
Did you go back to?
Went back to governance.
Governance, yeah.
And then I think that's what Ken fell off of the list.
Yes, is this something that governments can do? Is this something that you want to re-insight with a smaller group of folks?
I think that's the discussion that needs to happen now, who needs to talk more about it. So we've got, now we have a concise statement that we can talk about what's.
Well, we have like the three papers that we've got to get down.
Well, we got to see if we, you know, re-. So I think we've taken that through several durations, and so it's like, so now?
Okay, so now what? I think we need schools to come in.
Ken and Chris have both asked me to come back. I should have the five minutes.
All right. So we're working on the next governance meeting.
Next governance meeting.
Okay, so would we do that for the next government?
Yeah, for some reason, I thought I wrote a letter. We discussed it at the last January panel meeting.
Yeah, we did.
It feels a bit initiated.
Yeah, well, we had started before that, but it's really not to get it down. So I think it would be really good to have it by the end of the year, or if not by the end of the year, for substantive discussions in July. Because it's really a statement of values right here. The challenges and successes faced by non-Marlborough students and parents is the focus of the regional special education task force, so.
So I, I don't think we're going to meet the December timeline there. We, the, the committee such as it is, the task force rather, such as it is with the membership, we met, you know, up through June, and I think at that point, we felt as though we'd taken about as far as we could without greater participation and data from the school. And so, you know, I think at this point, Dr. McLeary and I are going to talk about this at next week's meeting, as I indicated earlier. But, you know, we're, you know, that's November, so I think we're probably some months away from, you know, completing, completing that.
But it's in progress. The alumni relations and alumni college and career progress, has that something, I think alumni relations function sort of exists?
Uh, yes, and I, there's been, there was some discussion in, in development around metrics, track alumni college and career progress. That's very long-term, very difficult, and I think it should be scary.
Actually, I, I want to, I think the idea here was that the one metric we were trying to get as people graduating four years from college, we thought was a pretty easy metric to be able to get in some sort of animal.
Not though. Because you've got kids who go, who leave here, and they start in college, and you know that pretty much. Well, we know again, we don't really know if they start. We don't know if they transfer. We don't know if they drop out. And we have, we don't know how well, how good we are at getting a placement. The alumni stuff is starting to look about that, so like, we really lose them when they graduate to have any reliable kind of information on what connection, so that, unless you want to put a lot of resources in, kind of see us make progress.
I think we need to relook at this one.
Okay, so we'll, we'll.
Yeah. There's this thing called social media that, I heard kids are all doing these days, so I think maybe we could leverage that a little bit, and maybe this is easier than I think it is. Maybe it's not.
It's easy, it's messy.
But you have discussed this in the long term, so that's, that's, that's a good way as well.
So one group of five people has discussed it in Toronto, they're.
The one group, oh, this group, yeah. Okay. We talked about it in broader group. And then with board development, using board track guidelines, develop project progress metrics for board effectiveness. That is something that we're working on governance. So now we, we recruit three new trustees, well, we have.
One down.
So we're a certain way there. And our pipeline is, is not huge, but that is being reiterated now, so that effort is a way. Okay, so that's just a check-in on our board. So next we move to committee governance, or committee updates governance.
I think the first one that you have down on your, on the agenda is the ED evaluation policy. Everybody should have read in their folder. There's really two documents. One is the red line, the edits that were made to the existing policy. So this is an existing policy. And then the second, the second document is the clean version, which has all the edits incorporated. And really, this was edited to reflect more of the current process specifically this past year. So you'll see, especially if you look at the version that has been, where the edits are shown, you'll see what's been crossed out. But that's the, the basic genesis of the changes that are there. And as you'll see, one of the big pieces of this, which shows up in that phase five, in prior phases of this process, but in phase five, we'll see a section that is redlined and crossed out that relates to the governance committee and collect all data. And really, the tool that we used, I think that worked very well this year, was the Board on Track ED evaluation process, or app that they had on their website, which we ended up using. And so we need to take a vote on this if there are any questions. It's been on this timeline, so whatever my schedule goes.
Is exactly the problem that's probably occurring. Okay, if you have questions, then I will undertake a motion to approve this revised policy.
We accept the policy as proposed.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? All.
Okay, and the second item on the agenda there, which is really the ED 2016, 17 bonus goals, I didn't see that in the package.
Yeah.
Several of us, I, I have my version in government, but several.
Oh. You have the four goals. Okay, um, it should be on, yeah, there it is. So it's on the screen. It's, it's very, very similar to what was discussed in governance, called discussed governance, and then exactly what the time we have to talk about. McLeary, I might still have to be there, so. The three main areas, what is it, three, or is there one? We added a fourth, right?
Right, we added a fourth.
Yeah, we added a fourth, yeah, governance, seven, four. So the, the first two really relate to stakeholder engagement, collaboration, and communication. The one is a broader engagement of all, all constituencies. The second one is very specifically on faculty, administrators, so it's internal. The third one is a student outcome measure. And the last one was a measure on engaging with external stakeholders, like corporations and, and universities in particular. And this was governance, sort of recommendation of, of the split.
Traditionally, I don't think we have financial metric in here.
We don't.
Back to Ken's point, I, I think it would be remiss if we did not have financial metric in there in terms of managing school budget.
I agree.
So I think there'd be a question of what would you want to, you know, reduce somewhere? I don't know that it needs to be a dramatic, you know, number.
I mean, so here's the question, because these are bonus goals.
Right.
Right, it's not part of just the ED's job evaluation, right? So which some financial measures definitely would be part of the job.
Right, that's the difference. I don't know if there's a heading on top of that, but one of the things we talked about was making it, you know, bonus goals or supplemental goals. Yeah. So it's not all the goals.
So is my opinion, financial management is part of the, the responsibility.
If I don't manage it financially, I just don't get the bonus. Otherwise, I can still.
That would, that would make sense.
I think it might be nice to put a header on this or paragraph at the front before it gets published that says, "Bonus goals are in addition to normal expectations in general."
Okay, yeah.
If we can clearly figure out something for that, that'd be fine.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Pauline, I thought we had amended the, say, that create preliminary communication strategy for internal and external stakeholders, and final action plan approved by the board chair, and both those would be in January.
We did, but I couldn't find that piece paper, so thank you, because we did talk about that. I was trying to figure out what it was.
You do want to get that thing in.
You're right. And, and Dr. McLeary actually agreed to that.
That beats, that beats, let's say, create a preliminary communication strategy for internal and external stakeholders, and a final action plan approved by the board chair, and those would both be in January.
Yep, you're right. Thank you. Yeah. The one change that was made after governance was a metric to measure that first one, which was that we would add in a question in the family and faculty survey, and the metric would be that improvement in communication has improved, right? At least 50% of respondents would say that communication has improved. It's a very high goal, but that's.
Good. And what's the one of the metrics, TBD?
Okay, so the metric, TBD. And actually, we even talked about this today. It is, this is, is truly TBD. I, I think we can discuss this as a, as a whole board, if there's some idea of how, what you might think would be useful measure here. If not, then we can continue to work on this, and I propose that in January, or February this, I can review which gender of that metric is.
Well, I think we've had a wonderful example of the one, of course, is that there today?
You could make this all about GE to start us off too. I mean, there's a couple ways we can go, but if we want to really, you know, put our toe in the water and see what this is like, maybe there's a partnership with GE to figure out what is the shared partnership, what's that metric look like? Things that you, lay some good ideas out there, things there that you can do with GE, then we could certainly, you know, anything above and beyond is terrific. So we might, maybe we just build it around shared goals with GE that.
There's something very actionable there.
That's one suggestion.
Yeah, I, I'd be hesitant to go with that. Dr. McLeary listed off, you know, half, a dozen different, you know, initiatives that we've got going on, and if we could abandon all of those and focus on GE, that wouldn't be the right answer. So I kind of like the idea of, we need to determine what this is, this is going to be. Maybe we shoot for having those criteria in place by the end of your evaluation. But it would seem like if you could expand upon what we're doing with the universities and, and the other, other businesses at a future date, I think that would help us have the parameters for a metric.
Well, part of this was, this was added in at the end of governance, right? And so there hasn't been a lot of time to.
But I think there's this thing, the stuff that Dr. McLeary reports was tonight, was very interesting, but it was kind of like.
Right, it's new, it's new, that's baseline.
It's kind of, you know, a lot of it is unorganized, so if we have that in some kind of schema that shows us where things are, where things are going, where we're expecting to be for the next number of relationships. And it sounds like it's all there, it just needs to be.
Yeah, it needs to be.
And I know, I know we're late, we're late on time, I just wanted to go back on that is, we do have A, B, C, A, B, C, D. So I still, I think Tom's point was good. I think he's right, there's a lot of stuff going on there. I just, I, I for one, I'm like, maybe there's a letter A or a B or something that might be tied specifically to the opportunity that's been handed to us. To see, to see what a real relationship.
Veritas.
Something like.
Because we have the opportunity.
Yeah.
Of course.
Yeah, there's something. But I think.
But it can't be.
Tom's right. Yep.
Just looking at my notes real quick on governance, relative to the time, when you said January, I just had down January Plan B.
Yeah, January Plan B, so it's a five, January first, right? Yeah, these, I think, I was supposed to communicate, I didn't, that any time there's something incorrect, it's.
Any more questions on this one? So if not, we need to take a vote on it?
Well, I would actually recommend that, I would recommend that it goes back to governance, and we have a matrix in place before we vote on this.
I agree.
That we have a matrix of, you have a metric?
Yeah, metric, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay.
Do you have a vote? And you have any concern with anything we've outlined here?
I'm sorry?
Do you have any concerns with anything that we've outlined here?
Well, I think the expanding engagement with corporations and universities is a bit big, so that is a concern. I think it's, in my sense, my view is that expanding may not be the right verb, because we already are doing a certain number of things, and to just add more without fully articulating what we're getting in terms of benefits from what we're doing strikes me as maybe not, you know, the best approach you can. I, I do know that one of the, one of the pieces of feedback I got from the board chairs was that, you know, they have a limited amount of time to do a lot of things, and while they're very open to, you know, fruitful exchanges, they're very conscious of the fact that if they, you know, added a seminar or something, it's one thing if somebody came in and, and spoke about their career and showed people what would be the possible endpoint of what they're studying now, but they all think that would be really beneficial. Many of them also see a benefit from having some kind of field trip, you know, where you go to the GE Life Sciences Lab and see what scientists are actually doing, that kind of thing. Those, those sorts of exchanges seem very helpful. But longer term things, they seem like they would see those more developing over the summer or possibly outside of the school day, because their day's already so crammed with, with things. That was the.
So, yeah, so again, I think if you came back with a little bit more detail about what we're already doing, and maybe some suggestions on what we could measure, what, you know, what's working, I think that, that'll go a long way in helping us with this metric. So I think, I think what I'm hearing from you is a metric that just says that we're working with a lot more companies and universities. It's probably not the right metric, because that's not, the department chairs don't have the bandwidth to do that, but that maybe we get more engagement with the ones that we have, we do more field trips with them or something like that, and maybe it's the metric that we, you know, that we want to be looking, you know, looking at here. And then to Mike's point, we have, you know, a metric here on B that we pilot an expanded relationship with GE, and, you know, those two things are how we would evaluate this one. But I think we need to hear a little bit more from you on what we're doing with other, other corporations and universities.
So do people want to defer a vote on this, or do we want to vote on it and just defer at, you know, we four, okay? We four, it's 10% know that we have to.
I suggest we vote on it as is.
I agree.
I would vote.
Okay, let's, let's take a vote and see where we are on that. Okay, so, I get motion approved these, knowing that we need to revise four. I mean, it's still a percentage issue.
So that's the question.
Voting on the percentage.
As this is going, that we need to revise.
Knowing that we need to provide metrics for number four, but the percentage is at the other, of the other 90%, or so.
I think others.
Okay?
Sir?
All in favor? Against? Okay. So two people will start. The motion does pass. So we'll continue to work, we'll go back with, in governance, we're going to go back to very hard on the board.
Okay, and that is for governance, I believe.
Yeah, okay, great. Mr. O'Keefe?
Okay, so, under development, first item is the focus of the annual fund. This is the upshot of our conversation at the last meeting. For a sense, the board was, no, we don't want it to go to the general operating fund of the school, but we want to say something specific about where it's going. Dr. McLeary and I met, we also discussed that committee, and the product of that is what you have here. So the first paragraph says that we are a charter school, and that tuition payments are not enough to allow us to do all the things that we want to do with the level of excellence in which we want to do. Second paragraph says, therefore, we will supplement our budget by including film profit resources, including the campaign fund, annual fund, individual corporate giving, foundation grants, and other appropriate sources, just to leave it open for future developments. Why film profit support is good. And then to get to the harder matter, next paragraph, annual fund is critical. Through the annual fund, we'll solicit charitable contributions, fund programs, initiatives to enhance teaching, learning, and the daily experience of the ELSI community. So that's the first kind of drawing a circle. Sources regenerated will be used for the following: technology for use by students and faculty, as opposed to IT in the school. Field trips, grants to faculty for special teaching projects, for example, faculty innovation grant. Special training opportunities for faculty beyond standard professional development. Improvements in the school environment to enhance daily experience in the ELSI community and alumni engagement. And these projects will be subject to regularly ELSI budgeting process, and the annual fund support will be supplemented by the school as appropriate. So obviously, budgeted at $40,000, the annual fund is not going to take care of all this stuff. But if you will, for some amount of it, there'll be courses that we're in, and it will also be, where the annual fund is supported project, the contribution will be prominently acknowledged, such as, you know, this bench provided generously by the annual fund, this scholarship fund, this grant fund. And that's to give the fund more visibility, to give donors and potential donors, but here are understanding what there is, and to remind people that we did this. The way this is written now, I want to thank Pauline and Tom for reading this, reading this in graph. This actually says that, that restricts us to using the money for any political purposes. So the question is, what changes to this could you, could we as a board?
So I have a question. So we found out tonight in the audit report that our reserves are in excess of seven and a half months. So, we found out tonight in the audit report that our reserves are in excess of seven and a half months. And certainly, that's a different answer than we received last year, where we said it's three to five months. I'm going to go back tonight and look at the video, right? So, we need to figure out, and I've got two issues here. So one is, I'd love an opinion at some point about what is our point of view in terms of what sure our reserves really did? Is it six, seven, eight, five, whatever that answer is? And then I'd love to know, I want to just be educated again on what can those reserves be used for? So if we decide that we want to make it six months, and we have more, we have excess, what can those reserves be used for that's different from this? Because that's what I want to be careful of, is going out and soliciting people for donations when the perception is that we have excess reserves that can be used for the same thing. So I just want to make sure I understand what reserves can be used for and what they cannot be used for, and make sure that this is different or not.
Just make clear, reserves can be used for anything. It's unambiguous that reserves can be used for anything. And I think what I heard them say is, three to six months is good. So three to six months being good does not imply that seven point, whatever the magic number is, is bad or something like.
No, I agree.
It says that it's better than good.
I agree, but I think, but, but for me, I think we should probably decide what are, what feels right for us as a board, right? Because nine months feels good, too. So, I just don't, I think we need to figure out, because my, my concern is that we're going to go out and we're going to be soliciting people for donations, right? When we haven't formed a final opinion about what is right, or what's good, and what we feel fortunate about, and kind of what our plans are going to be. So, I'm super supportive of, and you're working really hard on this, and supportive. And I want to be careful about soliciting donations when we may have money that can be used for the same thing. I'm just asking, that was an informal question.
For me, I think facilities has a major, for us, has a major, kind of, with the whole money situation. Facilities is a big topic. And so, for me, seven point eight is not a lot, but that's just.
But don't we, don't we, I don't think we would have it either, but I feel like we should have a very specific point of view about that. So, facilities, if that's, doesn't concern you, like, if we get eight point eight, then we feel bad. Like, I think we just got to have to start, it's probably around, almost time for us, I think, to start to figure out that of, what are the, what are these, what's the different purposes for these things? And what are those targets? And so, it just, I just think we probably should just have that discussion. Before we go.
So, could I mention one thing, because I think this is going to be a very long conversation? I would suggest that maybe this particular topic be taken up as part of the January meeting, because I think it's a very fundamental strategic question. The other thing I would just add is, though, and we need to figure that out. I think, though, having said that, I don't know how to quite say this eloquently, but I think it is important for the school to have the notion of an annual fund with a purpose. I think it brings the community together around some goals, despite the, the matter of the reserve. I mean, I think that's just fundamentally good thing.
So I guess the question, this actually will come up with the next document, because we could, so right now, we're doing this to launch this campaign. And we have been, over several years ago, for a prior vision, we didn't do it in the fall. It came in the spring, we were trying to back it up into the fall, because the time is good for these things. We don't have to. On the other hand, we do have actual, and we have a $40,000 budget item that we're up against. And so, an argument could be made that if we get this agreement, we get this agreement by January, and we're really kind of clear on what we're doing with what, we can make a more compelling case. And ultimately, I mean, it's just, you know, we wanted to, well, that's what we're supposed to. There's not a, it's better, but it's not super compelling. So, we could do that, so to just use the goal for, for, you know, put this discussion forward, so it slides up there. So you see, the trend has been down in everything. And, you know, it was predictably down last year. And I do, I've got a graph on a, it sent me for it. For a, for a, for a finish the document. For those of you who are graphically. So. Doing what we've done, we are not likely to come close to the $40,000. So we need to do additional things or do things differently. And certainly, spending the time to get clearer on what this money thing is all about, we need to do something different. If we postpone, we'll certainly not raise nothing.
What can we do in 2013, 2014?
Can I ask Roger, I don't.
We have a higher participation rate, that's the bottom line.
I think he actually would have the corporations to, for something, so I believe.
That made us a lot of calls that year.
So I think Melissa, I think Melissa might be able to answer that question. That was, that was 16,000, that was 2012, 12.
Is that the Spro?
Yes. No, Spro was the 16,000.
So I think if there was corporate solicitation of it, that has not taken place in the last two.
This is the, this is the annual giving, so the corporate will be coming through somewhere. So I think, I think your numbers tell the story here. We had a higher, we had the highest participation rate in 2013, 2014. You could not have the highest dollar, but we certainly got the highest participation.
For two years with the highest participation, 2010, 2013, those dollar rates are pretty close.
Yep. So I think, to your, to your point earlier, does it make sense to get crisper on what we want to do with reserves and help that frame what we're focusing this task for? To me, that makes a lot of sense.
Because I think this is really, I mean, there may be better words than that, but right now, I think this is about as crisp as we can get. And so if this doesn't, this feels too mushy.
I don't, it doesn't feel mushy to me, except for this complication thing that I heard tonight. So for me personally, I think they're connected, so I'd love a deeper conversation.
I want to deal about that, or anyone who would like to defer this until the January? January for sure seems like, because I've had that conversation, right? So the question is, do we think it would be useful to delay the, or not delay it, because actually, the last couple of months, the hell of a spring. Right, when did it switch from fall to spring?
I think that, you know what, I think that it switched 2013, 2014, and that may be why we're getting the higher participation rate. Maybe we did a double dip on that one, maybe we did fall and spring on that one.
There you go.
Because it would have been, if it was the fall, why would it have been 14, 14?
Because it was, it was fall of 2013, and spring of 2014.
Yeah.
That may have.
That may have been what happened. Did it fall of 13?
You know, worried evidence, but no, I don't.
That's for Christmas groceries, it will, it's really successful the way we manage it. I'm watching whether it was in fall or spring.
So back to you, we have no question, are we in agreement? Let's, let's move to the January meeting?
I would also just say, you know, I attended the last, I think, three finance committee meetings, and even though the surplus is now today, started 43.7 months from, the way the budget's written right now for this year, that's going to come down. And the way it's probably going to be written again for the following school year, it will come down farther. So if all things stay the same, that surplus is going to come down.
I guess, yes, I think that's really important, but I think it's time for us to, to plan for that, and then you'll get. Concerned about the. Yeah, it's very important. I also will volunteer, I am telling you, I dream about this tip, so I'll drop this. But, I'm, I'm almost certain that last year's answer was six to nine months of reserves, not three to five months. So I'm going to go back, it's all on video, so I'm going to go back and I'm going to look at.
I know, it's nice to do this.
I want to help, it's important for writer reasons, but one is, I just want to, it's an important data point. It's form art discussion, whatever we say.
Yeah, that would be very helpful.
And, you know, to help collect some of these, give some of these communications improvements, if you want, we'll have to take.
Probably a good thing to do.
So what was the audit report last year? We never. So I'll be in the January.
Okay, yeah, so that sounds good. All right, so our January is shaking up, and I already have a call scheduled to start talking about that, so we'll be planning, so in, hopefully by next month, we'll be able to talk more about how that, January, because we again, have the upside. Okay. Thank you, Bruce. I guess we've now updated the need for your second point, since your annual kicking off will happen. All right, so any quick update?
Just that we, I did not call for a meeting in September, October. I started looking at, trying to do one in November, it looks like that's not going to work, but right now, I'm working towards a December 8th meeting for the education.
I'm sorry, I have one more thing. You all got invited to the reunion?
Oh, yes.
Please come if you can, you don't have to stay all.
That's the thing.
That's the night of Thanksgiving.
No, it's the night after.
Yeah, that's right, so, night after Thanksgiving.
Friday?
Friday. So if you're around, I personally won't be, but it would be great to show your face. Not going to be speaking pro or anything, but an opportunity for somebody to say, we're the trustees and we think you're great.
And we should wear our little badges that we don't have.
You really think they want us there?
I think they'll be thrilled to have us appear, but I don't think they.
So they don't want us there, they want us up here, and then clean.
It's a long drive.
People were doing it, tickled, yeah, that we're doing it.
I think it's very cool. All right, we do not have executive session tonight. Absolutely, right? And I did, so we are about to adjourn, except that I forgot to mention at the start of the meeting that this meeting is being taken too.
This meeting was maybe a day?
Yes. All right, so with that, I will ask for agenda items for next month. We do have an early meeting, yes, but not early, but it's only three weeks between meetings, we could always wait. I mean, I've got sort of all follow-ups written, are there any other, I think, topics that we want to? I mean, I think that's the thing, something we're trying to talk about.
What was that?
Preparations for January. All right. Motion for her?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Yes, all in favor? Okay, we are adjourned.